All right, I apologize for the late start. Everybody had a chance to say hello to your neighbor. Appreciate that. But once again, I'm sorry for being late. I'll call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Sean Hood. And then the invocation, remain standing for the invocation by Alan Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I invite you to pray with me. Almighty God, we praise you. You are infinite, we are finite, you are all wise. We often act foolishly. You are perfect, Lord, we are sinners redeemed only through your son, Jesus Christ. We pray, Lord, that we might humble ourselves tonight before you, that we would truly try to serve one another. Help us, Lord, to be servants of the people. We're thankful, Lord, for these elected leaders and all the staff and all those who work for the benefit of this county and all its citizens, Lord. Will we pray for our county that we might seek to emphasize those things on which we agree and can work for the common good on rather than focus on the things that divide. In this political season, Lord, of elections, we just pray that you would help us to be patient with one another, to be compassionate, and again, to speak even when we disagree in not disagreeable way. And so we're thankful, Lord, for that spirit of unity that only you can give us, a spirit of compassion and love and mercy that you show on us, help us to show the same mercy and concern for one another. Bless, Lord, in particular, our most vulnerable citizens, our elderly, our children, those who are struggling economically, and may all the decisions that are made tonight take into account, Lord, how we can best protect those interests. And we give you thanks, Lord, and we give you all praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, thank you very much. As far as I know, there's no amendments to the agenda as is, okay. I'll entertain a motion to allow Chris to join us electronically. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify and say aye. Sounds like Chris, you're with us. You're on board. All right, first order of business is the, I think everybody's got the agenda in front of them, is the resolution of appreciation for Rebecca Chris, or Becky as we all know. It says, Sean, Sean, we'll let you read this one.
I'll have it. So we did, in honor of Becky Crest from the Commission of Revenue, resolution of appreciation for her many years of service to the county's Commissioner of Revenue's office. Whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors desires to celebrate public service and community leadership as a critical component in defining excellence and improving the vision of Smith County. And whereas Ms. Rebecca Becky Crest began public service to the citizens of Smith County as a clerk in the Office of the Commissioner of Revenue on January 26, 1990, and retired in April of 2024, having served under three commissioners and as chief deputy in the past two. And whereas, before serving in the Office of the Commissioner of Revenue, Becky worked with Department of Social Services assisting those in need to receive services such as fuel and emergency assistance. And whereas throughout her tenure, Becky partnered with longtime Commissioner Jeffrey Richardson to improve the lives of the citizens of Smith County in a variety of ways, including working with the, to implement the veteran tax relief program for both real estate and as well as personal property taxation, helping those who serve to protect our country's freedom. And whereas Becky's tenacity and determination was prevalent in everything she tackled, and that's another way of saying stubbornness. With passion to always do the right thing for the citizens of Smith County was envied by all that worked along her, along her side, and for that, we are grateful. Now therefore be it resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors hereby command and convey a heartfelt appreciation to Ms. Crest for her unwavering devotion to the citizens and taxpayers of Smith County. And be it further resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors hereby wishes Ms. Crest nothing but happiness and good health as she continues the next chapter of what has been a well-lived life and service to others, up to this 22nd day of August, 2024.
Becky, where are you?
I'm back here.
You were here when I, when I got here, and I wished you to stay, I left. And I think we got two or three people, I don't know if you might want to pay him, but we got two or three people wanting to comment. This is for you. Thank you very much.
Let's get my little brother over here.
But Jeff, you want to go first?
Well, I think just a number of people who made their way up here, who didn't work in our office, that she worked with and consulted with other offices and helped them, is reflective of what she's done for Smith County for 30 some years. Becky was always the person that was compassionate, caring, but knew how to make the trades on all time. She, and Lord, I have to tell y'all, we had entirely too much fun getting the job done. She would sometimes say to me, she'd say, "Lord Jeff, you and I are like Batman and Robin." Then she'd pause for a little bit and then go, "But we don't know which one's Batman." But we did have a good time, and we loved serving the citizens of Smith County, and I couldn't have found a better person to work with than you.
Well, right back at you.
I am very emotional today, but this is the time that I wish I was a really eloquent speaker, even though I'm not. Becky is an extremely intelligent, hardworking, dedicated person, and unless you've worked with her, I don't think anyone realized how much she did for everyone, and still does. And the still concern for everyone, and there will, no one can ever replace her knowledge or just all of the things that she did. And of course, she made it so much fun. And it was great working with Becky, and I was very happy for her to be home. She's living a great, enjoyable life with Dawn. They're having a great time and doing all kinds of things that they haven't been able to do, and I'm really happy for her. But I know that the citizens lost a great asset.
And I'm going to do something that's not on the agenda now, as anyone else in the room wishes to speak, because Becky's been, spent a lot of years doing personal property tax and many, many other duties in Commissioner of Revenue's office. So we appreciate you.
I only appreciate you, all you guys. You guys never get tired enough. It's so hard work.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess now that we've given it to you, we need to take a vote to approve. All those in favor signify and say aye. We approved it now. Hungry Mother Trail Council. Or we need to do that, a word on here is the proclamation.
Oh, that was going to be under citizens' time watch, but she, I don't know if you wanted to talk about that.
All right, so now, Mr. Gray.
Honorable Chairman and Board of Supervisors, thank you for a few moments of your time. As you know, we live in a wonderful spot in the world, and there are places that are pristine and undiscovered that could be more fully utilized. And, and so I am proposing to you for your consideration that you take a step towards allowing the feasibility study of the, the, what we can call the Hungry Mother Creek Sewer Easement. And that property, or this, this sewer easement goes from the spillway at, at Hungry Mother State Park, back behind the, the Hungry Mother Grocery and through Galio Vista Drive, and ends up near the, the end of the golf course. And so my, what we got through the town of Marion was a resolution to approve the, getting a feasibility study done. And there are a couple of different ways that we can, can go about that, either through Department of Transportation, or there are some other entities that have expressed some interest in funding this. But this is not saying that you want to do it, and there are some problems in, in, in creating the trail if it were to be done. The Department of Transportation sent me a letter with several questions, asking such things as the size of the culverts and, you know, the disparity in the, in the, in the parts of the pavement. Anyway, there are lots of questions, and so that is beyond my capabilities or knowledge to deal with, and that's why I think the feasibility study, if it can be done, would be the proper first step. But to do that, we need your all's permission, and because the bulk of the property is within the county. There's, there's about a mile of it that is, that is town property, and then there's some of that is in Hungry Mother State Park. The, the, basically, the trail has about a 50-foot elevation disparity between one end and the other, so it would be remarkably fat, flat for Smith County. And, and, you know, if we, if there are indeed 250,000 people that go to the state park every year, if a fraction of those would use this trail or find it usable to go from town out there or from the park into town, I think it would, would be a wonderful asset, especially if it could be tied into the Riverwalk, which there are drawings of that being done. Now, its feasibility, again, is, is in question. But what I am asking and what the sample resolution that you had before you was to, to support it, that we try to find funding for a feasibility study.
And I'll note page six is the draft resolution and follows the town Marion's resolution format.
Since your mind notes you want to read for consideration, you must read it, or you, you don't read it out loud?
I'm glad to read it out loud, or you, you had it in the packet, I'll do it.
What's the consensus of all of you? I'm fine with reading. Now, the question is, do we want to adopt this resolution? You got a motion? Have a motion to accept in a second to adopt the resolution? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify and say aye. Where do you stand, Chris? I want to be unanimous.
I will say that, you know, as we're waiting for Chris to join us here, I'll, I'll expect this will be in front of the board several times in the coming months for additional feedback.
And I'll warn you now, as you already said, being out will be a problem. I don't think they like this in Smith County. Sean's handing his hand over here.
What's the total length of that?
Chris, can you hear it? Start the TV off.
Maybe you can vote with the thumbs up or down.
Yeah, thumbs up, vote. For the resolution for the bike trail or walking trail. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
I'm going to wish you luck with the tent. We have no public hearings scheduled, I'm aware of. Amendments to the previous meeting, also in your packet. Any comments? Have a motion and a second? Any, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify and say aye. Thumbs up, okay, did she nails? Okay, so minutes are approved, August 22nd meeting, financial report, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you look on page 19 in your agenda, there is the county financial report in the August 31st, 2024. We had a bank and city balance of $14,581,765.43. That's just a little over $2 million higher than, than the end of July. And if you'll note over from last year, some of the special fund, project funds is starting to roll off that annual cycle. Yeah, so we're, we're trending in a, in a positive direction now from where we were. Looks, looks good. That's all I have. Also, the treasure buildings account is in your additional binder, I believe under the red folder. Yeah, red tab.
I entertain a motion to accept the financial report. Have a motion, say any discussion? Any, all those in favor signify and say aye. Thumbs up by Chris, so did she nails?
Try the mic one more time, Chris.
Can you hear you nails?
Yeah. Name of the invoice is accounts paid. All right, have a motion to pay them? Have a second for court. Any discussion? I'm going to make one comment here, I think the department heads and the constitutional officers need to pay attention to their budget versus what they spend already in going through the, what we had there. I noticed a couple of them are already puffed up against the limits of some of their expense accounts, so they need to look at those and correct some claims accordingly. It's going to be hard to get 10 more votes in. And okay, we have a motion and a second, any, no further discussion, all those in favor signify and say aye. Okay, you nails. Citizens, time. Mark Chaney.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Supervisors. My name is Mark Chaney, I'm the commander of American Legion Post 18 in Marion. I've spoken to you on numerous occasions, and then I gapped out on you a few times. It seems that we're very busy, as you guys are as well. Just wanted to bring to your attention several things for the month of September that we have going on, and I'll get this to these folks in a minute, but a bike night, we have an ALR, which is a riders group, motorcyclist group, which is sanctioned, it's a chapter of our American Legion, it's veterans that ride motorcycles, and we've had this chapter since October of last year. And one of the places that we're going to have a bike night is, well, it's going to be on September the 18th, and I'll get this to you. The reason that we have bike nights and things such as that is that we try to raise money for the Veterans Children's Fund. It's a fund that goes to the National American Legion, but it's also divvied out amongst the posts and down to the, from the districts down through the posts. So if we have somebody in our county that needs help, a veteran, a child of a veteran, I'm able to reach out and get that money, some of that money to help, I just have to go through the channels to get it. But we're also doing fundraisers to help build that fund up. We also help with the children's scholarship fund. Up until about two years ago, we were putting money into that. That fund is now completely solvent. Any veteran that goes and from the American Legion, their children will go to college. That fund, well, just with Virginia alone last year, the American Legion Riders of Virginia gave $121,000 from our state alone. We were the head, out of all the states, we were number one last year. This year, we came in second. We gave $114,000 from Department of Virginia, American Legions, only to be beat out by Maryland with $155,000. The total amount that was gathered this year was $960,000 to help Veterans Children. So a good positive thing. Also, we have an art and craft fair coming up September the 21st, nine to three. Again, it's a way for us to, to bring in money to help with our facilities, but mainly to help our veterans as well. So I'll give this. And I know you've got a busy schedule, I just wanted to bring up two other things that are going on with our membership right now. We're growing quite a bit. One of the things that I've done is to reach out to our Smith County Middle Schools, sixth through the eighth graders. There's an essay contest that the American Legion sponsors at the national level. It drops down to state, to the district, to the post level. The recipients, the winners of these essays awards, sixth to eighth graders, they will receive $50 checks, the school gets a $50 check. There's other awards as they continue to progress up through the district in Virginia State. And so I've sent out a packet to a lady, Ms. Williams, who's going to hopefully get this out to all of the area middle schools in Smith County. We're also doing a North Oracle program that's coming up as well. None of this is on the post level. It's all, as kids get, participate, they receive awards, monetary awards and, and other certificates and so forth, and they get a chance to compete at the higher level. And so again, these are things that we're just doing to drive Americanism closer to home, to get our kids involved. Right now, our legion, as I said, we're growing, we're at about 116% from last year. We also started up our, our auxiliary, and the auxiliary is relatively, it's an old program from the American Legion, but it's new to us. And so again, it's a, it's a program that gives spouses, childrens of active duty, of veterans with honorable discharges a chance to join the American Legion. Then I mentioned the ALR. The last thing I'll say is we're also bringing in, on Monday night, we had some guest speakers coming in for our monthly meeting. We've got the detachment commander of all Virginia, Sal, which is called the Sons of the American Legion. Any son, any, any male that was, whose father, mother is a veteran, received an honorable discharge, or their grandparents received an honorable discharge, that son is able to join the sons, the son of the American Legion. A lot of times people, and I speak to them all the time, they say, "Wow, you, you know, I wish I'd have gone in the military." Well, it's hard to when you're 63 years old. So this gives them an opportunity, though, to enjoy some of the military, the veteran things that are going on. And so again, it's things that are happening in your post. It's not our post, it's your post. And as we bring in more and more veterans, I just thank you for the opportunity to talk to you and just remind you that, you know, we're growing, we're here, we're here to help. We're here to help our community, we're here to help our veterans. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, Ms. Moore.
I'm wearing several hats tonight, so I hope that's okay. Constitution Week is September again, so Constitution Week, and there's a resolution that you all sign tonight that recognizes that this, it's the 20, it's the 17th through the 23rd of September is the official week, but we're kind of doing it for the whole month. So next week, if you see a bunch of people out in front of the Lutheran church at 7:00 on the 17th, we're having a bell ringing to kind of commemorate the signing of, of the Constitution. So you're welcome to come and bring a bell, or just come and join us, it'll be sure. Then, let's see. I, I wanted, two things. We have a speaker Sunday at 2:00 at the museum, and he's sitting in this room right now. He's probably ready to crawl under his chair.
Remember, I want to make sure that everyone sees it.
Yes, and I wish I could have nailed this when all the, the whole crowd was in here. That really would have, would have. But it should be fun. It's, what, 250 postcards?
Yep.
From Smith County? And he said they're five seconds apiece. He's just going to go through them real quick, but it'd be fun to see what the county was like over, what, 100 years span, probably?
Yeah, those numbers start around 1907, early 1930s.
Wow, okay. So come spend Sunday afternoon at 2:00 with us. And we thank you for that. Also want to thank you for the uniform that you all had restored and the case that it's in. That is, people walk through the door and head right for it, and then they start looking at the pictures and the history of it, and it's, it's really been a big draw, and we appreciate everything because the whole, now we've got people wanting to know about Lucy Crockett, we want to know about the house, they want, and so it's caused a good deal of interest, which is fun. What else was it? Oh, the Royal Oak Cemetery. Remember I came in here and told you we were missing a stone? We're not missing the stone. It was so corroded and covered in moss and lichen, it was on the back of Claire Hill Carter's stone. Yeah, so it, I went out there and sprayed it with D2 and let it sit for a few months, and then we went, I went out with Karen Gillespie, and she was like, "Oh, here it is, and you can now read it." So we're good on that. Also, our DAR group here in town has decided to honor the three Revolutionary War soldiers who are buried out there. We don't know exactly where the graves are, because if you've been out there, the, the stones are crumbling, but anyway, if it's okay to hand these out. Our, our DAR group applied for a $500 grant from the National DAR, 1,500 for the stone, and it will be put in place in November, and then, will anybody vote on y'all to come out and, so yes, it's, these are, there are also two Civil War soldiers buried out there as well. So give us a chance to, to do that. And we have a new name on the Patriot marker on the courthouse lawn, so they proved their ancestor, it's Doug Carlock. So if you're in Carlock Creek, it's the Carlock family came to us and said, "Hey, what do we have to do to get our guy's name on here?" And we did the research, and he, he qualified, so his name's on there now, too. So we've been, been a little bit busy, but I think that's all. Do you have any questions?
No, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank you all for what you all do. We had, it's, it's, for all of middle high school teachers.
Oh, that was great, yeah.
So our local history is being preserved in middle high schools, and that's very important.
Right, we had the elementary school teachers in, what, two years ago? And then initially, we got the middle and high school teachers in. And I told them, it was right before lunch, I said, "I won't keep you all day," and they stayed and took all the handouts, and, and we had a real good, good meeting with them, so I appreciate you all and that. All right, hope to see you someday.
Before we leave, we need to vote on the proclamation.
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm going to read it here. The proclamation is Constitution Week 2024. Whereas on September 17, 1787, following weeks of vigorous debate and compromise, 39 delegates from 12 states, including George Mason, George Washington, James Mason, George Washington, and John Lehrer from Virginia, signed the United States Constitution, which ratified the form and function of our nation's system of government. And whereas the Constitution was written to uphold individual rights and justice for all citizens of the United States, and these principles are reinforced in its first 10 amendments known as the Bill of Rights, and whereas the 237th anniversary of this historic event allows us to reflect upon our rights and responsibility as Americans to celebrate the foresight demonstrated by the framers of the Constitution, now therefore we, officials of Smith County, Virginia, on this day of September 12, 2024, do hereby recognize the week of September 17 through the 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. And a motion and a second, all those in favor signify and say aye. All those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Do you want me to go ahead and take that?
Do you want me to decide anymore?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Here's two of them, I think.
Okay, I have a spare, just in case you need any.
No. This matter of work.
Yes, sir. We appreciate this.
Hearing none, I'll close citizens' time. Own business, committee reports and recommendations, starting with the ordinance committee. Mr. Sturgill?
The ordinance committee met on September 5, 2024. Mr. Utter chaired the committee, chaired the committee, and had previously directed staff to work with Mr. Powers, developing ordinance for real estate tax exemption for surviving spouses of those killed in the line of duty. Mr. Utter noted that he would work with Mr. Powers to finalize any additional changes, but noted that the next step would be the scheduling of a public hearing for proposed ordinance. Following, following discussion, following motion was made. Act of District Supervisor Charlie Act has made a motion to recommend scheduling of a public hearing on October 10 at 5:00 p.m., or shortly thereafter, to gain comments on proposed ordinance with tax exemption for surviving spouses of in line of duty deaths. Chi District Supervisor Michael Sturgill seconded the motion, and it is unanimously approved by the committee.
Yes. As committee recommendation, any discussion? Now, what do you, I don't know if we need to stay here, we're talking about one acre, one acre of land with a house or whatever. But we've talked to the Washington County ordinance. Do you have any questions on that?
I'm sorry, I'm quite mistaken, I think.
Right. Yeah. So hearing no additional questions, all those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any further questions? I'll take it with unanimous.
Additionally, Mr. Powers is present. He discussed Smith County's ordinance, repeal its tax, and shared his plans to create a uniform policy for collections rather than looking to request a rewrite of the ordinance.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the vice committee, Mr. Utter will take care of that.
Yes, sir. Vice committee met on September 5. I had noted at the front of the meeting that it was at the request of the Commissioner of Revenue, Mr. Powers. He spoke to the committee about budgetary constraints and working towards more competitive salaries for his office staff, and the confusion he had regarding the budgetary process. Mr. Utter did remind the committee of the board's 3% across the board salary increases that were effective July 1. The next item that was talked about through that, the committee discussed clerk salaries and other constitutional offices for comparison, and the need to maintain parity, equal, equality and fairness. Mr. Utter noted that it may be prudent to survey peer localities to see if, if and how each supplement their respective constitutional offices and staff. Following discussion, the following motion was offered. Supervisor Sturgill made a motion to recommend a line of transfer of $13,800 from Commissioner of Revenue Department to Treasurer's Department to allow current salaries to be more competitively, equally aligned. Mr. Widner seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved, and recommendation from committee.
Okay, as committee recommendation, any further discussion? All those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
The committee followed that up with an additional motion, with Mr. Sturgill making the motion to direct county administration to begin a staff, a salary survey of surrounding localities. Tied back to the conversation during the committee, Mr. Widner seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved as committee recommendation.
All right, another committee recommendation, any discussion? All those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
That's all we had on the vice committee.
All right, going on to Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Sturgill.
Okay, Buildings and Grounds Committee met on September 5. Mr. Williams updated the committee on the timeline for Sheriff's Department, 911 dispatch and HHS office relocations. Mr. Utter next chair, change order number one from HHS Williams for Sheriff's Office relocation project in the amount of $36,000 due to poor soils being located that will likely cause future foundation issues at the new location of Sheriff's Office. Mr. Williams did explain the due diligence that has occurred, and it was his opinion, as well as Mr. Utter's opinion, that the change order was not due to poor judgment, it was indeed justified. Following discussion, following motion was offered. Will of District Supervisor Mr. Widner made a motion to recommend HHS Williams change order number one for Sheriff's Office relocation in the amount of $36,000. Chi District Supervisor Sturgill seconded the motion, it was approved by the committee.
All right, committee recommendation, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. That's it for Water and Sewer Committee, Mr. Powers.
Mr. Water and Sewer Committee met on September 5. Mr. Utter shared that the water purchase agreement between the town of Sawal and the county had expired, also due to the funding requirements for the town's office system line water project. The water authority purchase agreement needs additional language to also include the Worson County Service Authority, since their purchase, they purchase water from the town, but are connected to the county's water line to get that water. He also noted this agreement follows the same template as a former agreement, with the only update that includes the Worson County Service Authority. Following discussion, the following motion was made. Ryan Valley Supervisor Jason Paris made a motion to recommend approval of the updated water purchase contract with town Sawal. North Fork District Supervisor Rick Billings seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved. Committee recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we want to do that?
Yeah, I would like to avoid having to give you updates. So I received a message Tuesday from the town manager of Sawal, and she did have some proposed changes that she wanted to go run by her legal counsel, which she'll need to go to, Washington County Service Authority also. So my recommendation would be to table the, the water committee's recommendation at this time, just to see what changes there might be, and if they're substantial enough to have to have another water sewer committee. So, yeah, I'd recommend table instead of taking action tonight.
I'll make the motion, we table it tonight?
A second.
Okay, motion is second, any discussion? We don't need to vote this down, we just table.
Correct. Correctly made.
Okay, any, hearing none, all those in favor, I'll table in the motion, signify to say aye. Any votes? Christians allowed, I believe.
I mean, correct, I mean, a little bit.
Okay, unanimous. Yeah, empty, I agree with Sawal Library branch, Sean, you review this.
So in my staff comments at the last meeting, we've talked about some grant opportunities that the library has found for the Sawal branch. Remember, that was like a seven or eight million dollar new construction project, realized the, everything that was being proposed. The National Telecommunications and Information Administration, which I didn't realize was an actual organization, they have a grant program called the Digital Equity Competitive Grant Program, and that the construction, very few funds out there will actually build a library, but this one does. So the library is not eligible to apply, it has to be a unit of the local government. So the county would need to be the applicant and serve as the fiscal agent. Ms., if, I think we've had Ms. Veno here before in the past, she's a grant writer for a lot of projects around the county. She'll serve as, the grant writer, and the PBC will serve as the grant administrator for the project, so we'll, really, it'll just seem to be a pass through for us. There's no official requirements for the board to pass a formal resolution, but I would like to ask for formal authorization for me to sign the grant, just to show that the board supervisor is in support of the, of the application. Be glad to answer any questions. And I will say that they're, I think we're eligible to, it's a 75% grant, 25% match, we shouldn't fall into the eligibility sign to dismiss the match requirement, so it's a little bit 100% grant, we're going to ask for that anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make my request, Mr. Utter, to be approved, to continue this with approval of the board for the board.
All right, we have a motion to second for us to get involved with Mr. Utter, lead the way for us. Any further discussion? I ain't go wrong with the library, so I think it's good. All those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any votes like us?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Thank you.
We don't keep you talking, Mr. Chairman.
I guess, I'd rather find somebody else to talk, but I guess I'll keep ranting. The Joint Building Needs Task Force did have their first meeting last week, and basically, the main discussion centered around space needs for various offices of the county and the schools. We reviewed, you remember about two years ago, we had the ADCom do a building needs assessment that looked at all the spaces and recommendations for space needs. During those conversations, Dr. Carter did update the group on the grant funds that were awarded for the Chill Howie High School project, to make sure that we didn't forget that there were some potentials there. We talked about other school needs, being the Marion-Singer High School, Abdityam, and some other renovations at each of the high, each of the three high schools. The group did agree that the proper next step would be for the, at least for the school board to move forward on procurement of an architectural firm, to at least figure out what those costs are going to be. You can't talk about budgets for the future if you don't know how much you want to be spending, or asked to spend. So Mr. Carter, or Dr. Carter did note that there was some funds set aside by the school board that they've been building up for the last couple of years, right at a million dollars set aside for the Marion-Gym project, hopefully. The next meeting will focus on space needs for the county administration, DSS, school board, For H and R, basically the entities that are in this structure, whether we look at dividing up into two or three other buildings or new construction, or what the next steps might be. No action for the board at this point, but just updates. Glad to answer any questions, yeah.
Just a reminder, the 4.8 million grant is then, November 7, we have to have something placed.
By November 7, you have to take an action. The school board has to take an action, so they need to sign a contract with an architect or do something, and that's, what's that, 60 days from now? So they'll have time to procure an architect, but it'll be tight. But yeah, that just solidifies that we don't lose that 4.8 million in grant funds.
So all right, you don't actually want to?
No.
And I'm gonna have a comment here, I hope it's appropriate or not. Your last sentence are, I really think we need to kind of keep the administration, it's very handy, and I know it's sometimes an aggravation, but it's also very handy to have us and the school board along with extension register all working together in the same locality. When you have one across town, you lose some communications.
I agree.
So as we work forward, I mean, it's not going to stay that way, but I think we need to.
This would be a goal.
Yeah. Any new business? I don't have any.
No.
Please be sure to put your, oh, you're attending Sunday 15th. Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. Go back, go back again.
Two o'clock, Sunday the 15th.
At the, at the museum, the county museum. Okay.
All righty, we're here for the attorney now.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
I'll make any comments. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Utter. Report from the administration's side.
Okay, if you look on the backside of the red tab, is the information that I'm proud to formally present publicly, the county has, has been awarded the VACO's highest award for achievement for projects, for the Smith Grove Project. This is the housing project that we've used our, what was once called the ARPA money, we're calling it special projects, and now $3 million toward seed funds for housing development. Thank the newspaper for the great story that they did. So VACO will be here at the October 24 meeting to make a presentation, so I just wanted to let you all know that. The Southwest Virginia Alliance for Manufacturing, their manufacturing awards banquet is going to be October 3. On the front side of the orange tab, you have that invite, and if you are interested in going, let us know. Hope, preferably by the end of next week, so we can go ahead and get the registrations set up. I think we have eight seats, I think we have, we have a table, I don't know how many seats are in, but usually we don't fill the whole.
Is there a seat in the room?
Yeah, yeah, so please let me know. It's, it's a, it's a good dinner, it's a good meeting conversation to celebrate the industries of the county and the region. Just to let you know, the Act of Latin Center for Hope, they have finally met all of the hurdles, jumped through all the hurdles, what is it, cut all the red tape and everything else. They are under construction, renovation work. I drove by today, and there were some contractors up there doing some work, so that's a, that's going to be about a 12-month process, so we'll have some updates as we go forward. And then finally, the Recovery Court is hosting their annual national recovery, candlelight visual. On the backside of the orange tab, there's more information on them. It's September 30 at 7 o'clock, what's that, at the courthouse steps, and we'll have, that whole week will have the lights at the courthouse purple in honor of the Recovery Court and substance abuse, substance abuse week. And I think that's all I have. Unless, unless anybody else in the staff was happy.
Mr. Chairman, I was at Mount Rogers Plan Commission on that FERC achievement award that we got, that we're going to be presented with. There were numerous counties that applied for that, and we were ranked number one.
Yep. There were 140 submissions statewide, and we were fortunate enough to win it.
Well, we won two different categories there, too.
We did. We also won for small community, for the Smith Promise Program, and that's the partnership with the foundation and the community colleges. And I think what got us the award there was the fact that we don't care what kind of classes are being taken, whether it's educational or vocational or education track, you know, if it's a welder, we're funding that, too, because that's all workforce development, and I think they recognize that.
All right, I guess we move into supervisor comments. Any comments to the board?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing me to be in remotely. I'm actually sitting in Point Pleasant Beach, New Jersey, enjoying the country and my grandchildren. So they moved far away against us, can't see them in probably twice a year, so this number one for me for the next six months long. Also want to give you notice, I won't be at the next meeting in two weeks. I'll be in Winter Wolf and Shores for Empire Academy, so trying to learn to be at Empire for a little bit, so I can maybe make it to work with you. I will be absent next, in two weeks for you guys. And again, I appreciate you all, and I'm going to be my personal bandy in that respect. And I did want to congratulate the county and their success in earning these awards that's pretty accomplished, and others from the rest of the state. And again, I want to thank the state and Adrianne to keep me straight here, without her little mentions of the. little mentions that the, that's messed you up, probably be more active than I am, just because of the work that's been here. But anyways, thank you all and that's all my comments up until today, thank you.
All righty, I don't have much to say tonight, I'm mixed on the cards here. I thought I was going to say, but I forgot what it was. You'll think I'm a poor man. I reserve a mic to get back, but appreciate all that. Oh, I was going to comment on the fact that we, you know, we were recognized by VACO for this, keep in mind, last, last meeting I believe it was, our tourism won some state awards also, so I don't know how to say this, but without getting big, we're starting to be recognized throughout the state. You know, we were redheaded stepchild there for so many years, you know, we existed, but they seen what they cannot do with us. And now we're beginning to be recognized and that helps, and that says he worked on things here in the state and noted. And when they start copying our program, we know we've really succeeded, so. Having said that, we've got a good staff and that just shows we do have a good staff going forward getting these things done. We just need to cooperate more with our nonprofits, our people in this county that are working, have the same goals we do, just sometimes we don't communicate enough, so let's keep that in mind and communicate and take part in other organizations who definitely are kosher. Mr. Wyler?
You say all. I can't say, well, I just said, I want to say over the work here in a little while. But I just want to recognize some positive things I've been hearing from the Smith County Recreation Department, I've been hearing a lot of good, positive reactions on that. I did get to attend one of their football games and it was, it was really nice and just a good feeling to see that back in, in motion in the community of Marion and this, I guess northeast of the county.
I understand both teams, all three teams are 2-1 right now.
Well, that means you're making a statement, they play the show, they, I won't say much, been looking forward to it, so, but I just want to thank all the parents and everybody for the volunteering, helping these kids. Also, not only the football cheerleading and stuff, it's just great to see that everybody has the same opportunity now all the way across the county and that's, that's what all vows taken here, virtue of make sure everybody has that same opportunity. I want to recognize American Legion, Mr. Chaney, thank you for all you and everybody there has been able to do to get that chapter where it's at now. I'm getting my membership here, but I haven't forgotten, I just, it's just been, it's been a while, month or so, but to see what these guys do is absolutely amazing and, like I said, they have the breakfast, if I could ever get off meds on my shit, I'm going to come to breakfast. But just what they're able to provide to the community is absolutely amazing and just such a good spirit with everybody down there and the riders, American Legion riders, they're absolutely amazing to see and watch whenever they're doing their stuff, just wanted to recognize you guys and thank you for all you're doing. I don't think I have anything else, oh, I did want to just mention about the roundabout album at the construction, so I know it was a little rough to start there for just a little bit, but I think they finally, they have a red light for roundabout, but it seems like everything's working okay there, I think maybe a little better right now than previously thought as far as the lag in time and traffic, trying to get through the areas, I think they got something worked out while they're still working on it, so I was actually pleasantly surprised at how, how they were able to keep everything moving as good as they are with one light, so, but thank you, it's all about.
First of all, I want to thank our veterans for all they've done for our country, you know, I think we look around, we see how blessed we are to live in our country, you see what, news and stuff, what people in other countries live through, so thank you all so much for your dedication and service to our country. Second thing, and I'm speaking, Mr. Wyler, I know he was a key player last night, his my, his phone in my house rang three or four times in the middle of the night, I don't know if you've noticed on the news, we've had, there's been a lot of online threat issues ever since the place in Georgia, but I would like to thank our sheriff's department for quick and responsive actions and every time we've had one, it's been dealt with quickly, so there's not an issue and, so I'd like to thank our sheriff's department for them and their service and taking care of those and I know Mr. Wyler probably hasn't had hardly any sleep, so in the last 24 hours, so thank you. Also, and by the way, we've had two, one of them was a school in Kentucky and they forgot to, and they took Kentucky out and just said Marion, and then we got, well, it was one today, and it was about a list of schools in England, they should have charged the email, but people that forget to, they get online, they look up, they want a phone number, whatever, they don't pay attention to what state it is. And one year we had one, it was a school in New Orleans, and the next day we had one that was a school, a school that's in like an Oregon, so, you know, and of course, luckily there are different times, I hope it's after our school day ended, so, but anyway, we thank all the people of help of that, quick responses and work hard on that. Also, I'd like to, big shout out to staff for all the awards and all the programs, like you've done an excellent job there and I want to thank also our board members for their job working together, we work, think through a lot of things and we all communicate well together and I think it makes a great cohesive team and thank you all for that, I appreciate it a lot and a lot of big shout out to our county attorney, he does a fantastic job for us, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a request from the board to allow our county administrator, Mr. Hutt, to get with Dr. Dennis Carter and school board about removing some overgrown huge trees on the Northwood football stadium area. They're overgrown and it's a haven for trash and that's unfortunate, it's just looking unsightly, they just need to be gone. As over the day, they were lining the field, doing a great job doing that for the game coming up and noticed those trees, the automatic field liner can't even work there because you can't get a signal to the trees and stuffs. And as any of them would fall, it couldn't possibly hurt a child or any pedestrian or vehicle or take the school board out or whatever and we can't afford that, so.
Any idea how many trees there are?
Tell me what's about.
I was saying, I've looked at yesterday, those of our line of field now, I'm going to say it's about eight to 10. Yeah, they're a pretty big red tree.
That pine, hemlock. Actually, hemlock is expensive wood right now, you may even find somebody to do it for the wood, that's pretty good.
I'll give it to Dr. Carter.
All right, I appreciate that.
I don't think we need to motion for that, we're all safe right here in approval.
I'd like to thank the state for doing a good job, they do great, I don't know what we'd do without them. We have a new staff member, what's her name?
Shannon.
Shannon, so going to have to break her in, right, I guess.
Be gentle.
Yeah, right, but glad they did that good work for you and everything, God bless each one of you.
All righty, thank you, Roscoe, guess that's it.
That's fine. You know, I don't know how you could echo anymore, but what the staff does here is excellent. You know, here we are an hour and five minutes into a board meeting and we're pretty much to the end and with that being said, there's a lot of work that goes on in the background to make us work good when we get up here and there's a lot of, there's a lot of commitment also between the board members and showing up at the committee meetings and that kind of stuff and making those happen when they should. So there's a, there's a lot that goes on there that you don't see when you come to a board meeting that has happened in the background and that's, you know, I appreciate all that effort. With that also being said, I'd like to say, you know, you listen to Mr. Surzer here talk about lining the fields at other high schools and you talk about the stuff that everybody, you know, Courtney last night and, you know, Chris talking about going to Warner Robins, Georgia to do, get to improve as a little league umpire, absolutely zero compensation after that, that's out of his pocket. There's a lot of things that go on, you know, I myself refereed high school football for years, I volunteer fireman, I do the announcing at Chilhawee football games, you know, there's a lot of things that go on that, whether we were elected officials or not, we were serving the community well before and if the next time I'm not elected, I'll promise you, I will continue to serve the community in another capacity. But that's the reason we're here, is to make Smith County a better place, not for, you know, not for yesterday, but for tomorrow. And what I would say with that is, as well is, you know, progress takes time, just like the roundabout, it takes time, you got to tear up a few things to get there, it's like baking a cake, you got to make a mess and then eventually the candy lines up good, well hopefully good, depends on what kind of baker you are. But with that, just like the rec program, you know, Courtney mentioned, that's something that has been desperately needed for years, I would say this year, it's talking about Marion being, you know, the team's being 2-1, but the fruits of that labor will be in a few years when Marion High School football, Rick gets those kids into that program, the figure, we see that Chilhawee, I assume in Northwood, it's the figure programs that feed up into that. It's that, it's that work that you never see at the level you never see, that finally, when it gets there, it's just like the American Legion, you know, my father had been out there and I, and you're dealing with an aging population, there's not as many veterans now as there was, you know, years ago. And with that being said, the work that they're doing out there, you drive by, the building's clean, it's nice, they, they always have an event, it takes people to do that, there's a lot of work on the backside that nobody has ever saw, all you do is you just know now that there's activity at that building, there's life in that building, it puts life in the community. Speaking of life in the community, Sugar Grove last night, Sugar Grove Fire, I don't know if anybody's seen it, but the members of the fire department, community over there walked 343 laps, and there were members of the 343 firemen that lost their life on 9/11 last night, I think that's, I think that's 80, a little over 85 miles or something. Now, I know one person didn't do that, but the community got together and did that last night, and remember, it's something they didn't have to do, but it's a, it's a, it's a community building exercise and I was unable to attend that, you know, shame on me, I had other, I had a work thing that I couldn't do, but their community got together and done it to do that. I was in Conor Rock on Monday night at their community meeting, you know, they got lots of things, Conor Rock, a lot of people don't even realize Conor Rock's still in Smith County, it's a wonderful community over there, and there's a lot of things happening over there. With that being said, you know, they're talking about next Friday night, they're having a chicken dinner, they're having chicken dinners that they're selling to raise money for the community center, they have breakfast every, you know, the first Saturday of every month from 7:30, I don't know where you get a bed of breakfast for eight bucks. I know me and Sean have seen each other over there, they have yard sales, they got one coming up on September 7th and it's, you know, so there's a lot of things in these little communities, I know that, you know, stuff that's going on over toward the fair, if you're never over in the Rich Valley area, you never see it, but I know people that are on the, that are on the board at the fair and I, you know, we've talked about it here, there's a lot of good things going on, you know, in that, so, and then I guess lastly, I would like to say, you know, I think it's a great step forward that the board has taken and the county has taken to recognize those individuals in our county, whether, no matter how it happened, let's just put it that way, that have lost their life in the line of duty, to at least take action to, it's a gesture, I mean, and it's a, we're talking about an acre ground with a house on it, but, but for somebody to give their life, whether it was day one or they've done it for 50 years, if they do it in the line of duty, I mean, they're serving the community, so I, you know, it's one of those things we experienced as a fire department, having a member, you know, with a line of duty desk and, you know, the stuff that has to go into that and going to a family and explaining to them what happened at that time, I hope nobody ever has to do that. But when you do, it's, it's a token, there's things out there, it's just a token to show an appreciation, so I, you know, I, I hope as we, as we move forward, that's something that, you know, just gets rolled really through with no discussion and just goes right through and it's done, it should have been, I say should have been done before, I would have hoped that we would have never had to discuss it again. So things happen, but I'll leave it at that and thank everybody for all they do and y'all have a good night, be safe.
Well, there's something different, anybody else want to make a comment, Sean?
Yeah, I did miss two things and my time is, they're quick, VDOT's coming to the next meeting, so if you have any issues that you want them to update you on or report on, if you can get them to Anna, as soon as possible, she can get them to VDOT and coordinate with them and I know Mr. Wyler probably has a few. But the VACO conference that's coming in November, we need to know who all is interested in going, November 9th to the 12th, get with Anna, we have three rooms at the hotel and three rooms about five minutes away, it's not an Airbnb, but a bed breakfast, so it's a little bit better, so we do have six available set aside, so let Anna know as soon as possible. Thank you.
Anybody else need, say anything? Hearing none, we need, we have a closed session planned, we have, we need for a discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property regarding the HSA's request for hardwood drive filters.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion here, closed session under, 2.2, that's 3711, A3, discuss consideration, acquisition of real property for public purpose, board disposition of publicly held real property regarding HSA's request for hardwoods.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion to second, all those in favor going into closed session, 65 is saying aye. All right, it's unanimous, we're now in closed session, just a minute. Give her time to turn the recorder off.